Crystal, you're ready, I take it.
Mr. Herrs here.
This is the December 4th, 2012 Salina City Planning Commission meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda today is number one, approval of the summary minutes of the November 20th, 2012 regular meeting. Are there any questions or comments or a motion to approve the minutes?
I wasn't here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion then that we approve the summary minutes of the November 20th, 2012 regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all of those in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed that is carried?
Mr. Chairman, before we get into opening the public hearing on each of the individual school sites, you have in your packets there a what's referred to as a cover report and there's some items in there I would like to go over, not as part of the individual school public hearings, but just an overview of the process.
Please do.
Okay. Mr. Bergerd, you have the projector ready. By way of introduction or re-going back and saying why are we here, this is an excerpt from the Salina Comprehensive Plan and one of the recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan was that there be created a public use zoning district. And you can see from the introduction there, it talks about government centers and facilities and semi-public uses, libraries, cemeteries, also mentions schools there or educational facilities. And so, one of the things that we have in our Comprehensive Plan is we have throughout the community, a number of uses that are identified on our future land use plan as public or semi-public uses, including all of the school sites that are here today. So when we were reviewing the proposed Comprehensive Plan and looking at some of the implementation items, one of the things that the Planning Commission agreed to start out with in terms of implementation was the creation of a public use zoning district. And what we have in terms of the order in which things began, the first item of business was to create the content of the public use zoning district. And John, I think that's the very last item there that you have in your grouping. But by way of review, this is a new division that was added to the zoning ordinance. It was Division 10.2 Public Use District. And as you can see, one of the purposes was, it's intended for use in areas of the city which have been assigned a public semi-public parks or open space, future land use designation. So the, some of the things that were identified were things like neighborhood parks, community parks, fire stations, things of that nature. Those would fall into the public facilities category. There were also uses in there that were identified as conditional uses. Our focus here today is the educational facilities portion of that. And this is what that ordinance looks like as of last evening, when a corrective text amendment that you recommended on the 20th of November got this language here placed in the correct section, which is as permitted accessory uses. So the three uses that would be primary permitted uses, meaning no review by the Planning Commission on an individual basis, would be administrative offices for educational facilities, such as what you have over at the former Glenifer Hill School, elementary and intermediate schools, and also secondary schools, which would be Central and South High. Also, storage building signs, accessory parking would all be permitted. If the school district came forward with a plan to construct an athletic stadium or choose a location for a bus barn or school maintenance facility or yard in a public use area, then those would be considered conditional uses, as would if they built some sort of arena or if they applied to put up some wireless communication facility on a school campus that was zoned public use. One thing I did want to reemphasize is that the school district owns some property on Magnolia Road, just to the east of the Eastview Estates subdivision, east of Ohio. So if you're on Magnolia, which most of you aren't using today because it's not open to traffic, there is a sewer pump station that's on the south side of Magnolia Road, just to the east of Eastview Estates. And just to the east of that and extending south is property that's owned by USD 305. If they were wanting to develop that as a school site, they would still have to apply to the Planning Commission for a rezoning of that property for public use. There would be notification provided to all the neighboring property owners in a public hearing to consider whether that is an appropriate location for a school. The same thing would happen if at one of these existing school sites, USD 305 was interested in acquiring additional property and acquiring or expanding the campus, they would have to apply to rezone that property to public use educational facilities and there would be a public hearing on that. So what the application here is limited to is the existing, already in use campus sites of 14 established educational facilities. And it would not in any way preclude if there was ever an expansion or acquisition of property for additional school facilities, there would still be an application process, notification, public hearings for any school expansion or new facility. So I wanted to make clear that it's not that if this were approved, the school could go out and acquire property and construct things without having a public hearing or zoning. What it would mean is if you approved this and there was some building that they wanted to build at, say Lakewood Middle School, they wouldn't have to amend their conditional use permit or things of that nature. They would be able to do that as a permitted use. And so, John, I wanted to go to the school zoning status slide. Not the, it should be the divided one, John. The pre-77, post-77. Okay. For planning staff's purposes, I think this is the single most important item in your packet in terms of understanding the applications that are before you today. And what you see on the left are schools that were built before 1977. And each of those today, by virtue of, John, you can scroll up a little and you'll see the language at the bottom. But each of those schools existed on February 14th, 1977, when the current zoning ordinance was adopted. And by virtue of that action, they were permitted uses when built and they were carried over as permitted uses because they existed on February 14th, 1977. So if you could go back, John. What we have explained to members of the public and those who have inquired about that might be a neighbor to Stewart School or South High, what is the change in status? The change in status for the schools in the left-hand column is really that there's no change in status, except that there, if they came in for a building permit to do an addition or to put in a modular classroom or to put in an accessory building or a parking lot, that they would be subject to the rules of the public use district and not residential zoning. And so, for those schools, there would not be a real change in status. For the five on the left, I think that that should be the primary focus of your hearing and your deliberation is that today Lakewood Middle School, Cottonwood Elementary School, the parking lot north of Metalark School, but not the school itself, Oakdale Elementary and the administrative offices for the school district are all under approved site plans. And so, one of the possible reasons for doing this or justifications for doing this would be to basically provide a level playing field or an understandable playing field to put all of those properties under the same set of rules and giving them the same status. So what our focus on in terms of the background is that all of those schools that are, will have a hearing on here shortly and deliberate on individually, there really isn't a change in status. For the five that are in the right-hand column, there would be a change in status or a potential change in status depending on what they did. And if you were to recommend that each of these be reclassified to a public use district, then all of those would be operating under the same status and the same rules. So wanted to, just by way of background, back up to that. And then, John, there's a slide there called Comparison Schools R1 and Public Educational Facility District. And you have seen this because you deliberated on it when you made recommendations regarding the district. But the asterisk areas here are the changes that public use would allow greater lot coverage, a greater height, allow more of the site to be covered with impervious surface. And you can keep going, John. The setbacks are essentially the same. And the other difference is that you have now recommended the adoption and the city commission has adopted signs for the public use district. And it's in your minutes and we refreshed it at your last meeting. But based on a request that came from Cottonwood Elementary School, you recommended some modifications to the sign regulations for residential districts that allowed for limited size electronic changeable copy signs in residential districts. When the public use district was adopted and it became clear that schools might be moved into the public use category, you essentially took those same language and same parameters related to those signs that you had put in the residential and adopted those into the public use signage as well, so that the school district and others had the same opportunities for signage that they would have had if they'd remained residential. So the driving force behind this was implementation of concepts in the Comprehensive Plan. The order of business was to create the content of a public use district, create the content of public use sign regulations. And then, having done that, this was identifying properties that in the Comprehensive Plan are shown as public, semi-public, and considering whether these properties should be reclassified to the public use district. So that is pretty much a summation of the cover report that we provided in your packet. And I would entertain any questions that commissioners might have regarding some of that background information.
Any questions of staff?
If you do not have questions, and I think it's, we've laid the background out for you, then I think it would be appropriate, we would remind you that you first had a public hearing on these individual schools on the 2nd of October. There was essentially a timeout called to allow for the legislative process to work in terms of correcting the content of the educational facilities district. That has been completed. And in terms of notice, there was notice provided by mail ahead of the October 2nd hearing. And then subsequent to that, although not required by statute, as part of the corrective text amendment hearing for the 20th, there was another mailing that went out that reminded individuals that they would have another opportunity for public comment on the 4th of December at this public hearing. So, Mr. Bankston may have some additional advice for you on the conduct of the hearing, but you need to essentially open and close the public hearing on each of these items individually. And this is a quasi-judicial matter as you consider each of these properties individually. And with that, before we actually open any hearings, I guess I'll see if Mr. Bankston liked to make any comments about the quasi-judicial nature.
Mr. Bankston.
Well, I think Mr. Andrews explained very well where the process is and what is before you today. And I would certainly answer any questions. I think you all are familiar with the quasi-judicial aspect of your deliberations. So if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And as we proceed along, I see that the staff findings are basically the same for each of these schools. So would it be necessary for us to kind of poll ourselves about if we agree with the staff findings?
Right. And what we, it's what we tried to do here at the beginning is that although our findings are consistent throughout, there may be a reason or justification for looking at the five where there would be a change in status differently. And as we get to those, we will call that out, that it is in fact a change in status. But the format that we have used with the reports is to make our findings at the conclusion of the report and then a staff recommendation. And your role is to hear the report, hear any comments related to that particular property and then see if you are in agreement with staff findings. And as we've indicated before, if there is not agreement amongst commissioners with those findings furnished by staff, then you'd have the opportunity to poll members and see that and consult with Mr. Bankston about developing alternative findings. But you are correct, our findings were consistent through the individual school sites.
All right. Thank you then. Any questions of Mr. Bankston from the rest of the commission?
This may be corollary to your question, Paul, Carl, but because of the specific ones that are specifically affected and because the staff reports are essentially the same, I'm wondering if we could not group all of those that are specifically affected in one group. I don't know with members of the public, I'm not seeing a huge crowd here, but if there's a need to specifically address each one of those.
I think you do need to address them one at a time.
Each of the properties needs to be developed or looked at individually. There's an individual hearing related to each one and findings related to each one.
Yeah, because of the quasi-judicial nature of the proceeding.
Because it's property specific.
Okay.
Well, with all that under recommendation, we'll continue on with item number two and Application Z1221. And would the staff like to present that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The hearing on this item is continued over from the October 2nd meeting. And the one thing that we've called out there for you that has changed since the very initial initiation of this process is that the city of Salina is now the owner of the lower playground area. And so, that is not part of USD 305's holdings and not part of this request. So this boundary right here is the subject area, subject to potential change. And this lower playground area here is under the ownership of the city of Salina. And we've given you the background history. Some of you may or may not know, the Salina Board of Education offices used to be inside this building down here on the basement level. And with the closure of Glenifer Hill Elementary School, they proposed converting that to administrative office space. And the concern at the time was that absent a school function and just being administrative offices, that was not a permitted use in a residential zoning district. And the city did not have a public use zoning district at the time. And it, there was a belief that to go in and rezone it to C1 or C2 could potentially be considered spot zoning because there's no commercial zoning in the immediate vicinity. So the lacking a public use district, the solution that was created was to create a planned development district to allow the office use, but not allow any other commercial uses. So we have summarized that and the, on page two of your report there was the commission's reasons for rezoning this property to a planned development district. The city commission concurred with that and since November of 1994, this property has been part of a planned development district. As we noted, if the planned development district is repealed, the city-owned park portion would at some point be looked at with some of the other parks as being appropriate for public use, public facilities zoning. But what we're talking about is the east 1.65 acres of the former Glenifer Hill School property. And the proposal is to rezone it from Planned Development District R to public use educational facilities. And the effect of this change would be to repeal the existing planned development district and make the existing school district offices a permitted use. And this would be a change in status because if you were to take that action, any proposed changes to the site plan that was approved in 1994 would no longer have to be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. We would need to do follow-up action related to the planned development district on the park land. And so, we have summarized for you in each of the reports, the purpose of the district and gone through the analysis of the factors, which includes suitability to the site for development under existing zoning. And researching that case, had there been a public use district in existence at that time in 1994, that's probably what this property would be zoned today. In terms of character of the neighborhood, I think you're familiar with the surrounding neighborhood, that it's pretty solidly residential with the playground area and the uncompleted condominiums to the west. And obviously, you have Indian Rock Park to the south of the property. In 1994, the planning commission, city commission, found that the continued ownership and use of the property by the school district was really a continuation of the public use of the property and was not a commercialization or a commercial use of the property. There should be no impact on public facilities or services. And what you'll see consistently in our reports is that a change to public educational facility zoning would be more in conformance with the future land use plan than the current planned development district R zoning. So our findings are this school site is an established public use in this neighborhood in which it's located and it appears to be operating compatibly with the surrounding uses. The public use zoning designation more accurately reflects the ownership and use of the school property than the current designation because the PDD was used as a substitute for that in 1994. And a change to the public use educational facility zoning would be in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. So those are the findings that we have made in relation to this property, that it is a long-established use in the neighborhood and it's well-accepted in the neighborhood and changing it to public use designation would be more consistent with the Comprehensive Plan than the present zoning designation. So I've given you a little bit of history on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the administrative offices on Gipson.
Thank you, Dean. Are there questions about the staff presentation? If there are none, gentlemen, I'll ask if the applicant, the school system, has a representative has comment on this item? And if you would, for the record, your name and address, please.
My name's Amy Lang. I'm the facilities coordinator for USD 305 here representing the school district. 1511 Gipson is where our offices are at, so nice to see that photo up there. The comments I'm about to make, I'd like to make them applicable to all the properties that are under rezoning, if I could, please. First of all, thank you very much to the planning staff for assembling all of the historical information and the comparative information about each and every one of these properties. That's a tremendous amount of work and sincerely appreciate their efforts. First, let me say that your schools are incredibly important to you. And we have worked very hard as a school district to ensure that we're being good stewards of those buildings and to ensure that we're good neighbors to all of the surrounding properties. And our intention is to certainly continue that same diligence and that same effort to be good neighbors and good stewards. Secondly, wanted to say that the public use educational facility zoning is certainly more consistent with the normal day-to-day operations of the school district. What we need to do to function effectively as a school and provide the best education we can for all of our students, definitely more consistent with our normal day-to-day operations than residential zoning. So we definitely encourage you to consider that as you go through and consider this, the rezoning applications. And thirdly, wanted to remind the commissioners as well as the citizens of Salina, that the letters that were sent out that showed the ring around the properties, that ring on the notification letters is simply the notification area for the boundaries that may be impacted be impacted by the zoning. But the zoning change only occurs to the property owned by USD 305 and that we are certainly not impacting the surrounding neighboring properties. Just wanted to make sure that that was, that was still out in the open. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer them for you.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you very much. Nothing else from the applicant, then I'll open the public portion of the comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to application Z 1221? Once the public portion is closed, it will remain closed. There being none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, how do you feel about staff findings and what discussion have we about this item?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I am in agreement that the school site is an established public use, the neighborhood is which, in which it is located is compatible with the surrounding uses, and that the proposed public use zoning designation more accurately reflects the ownership and the use of this school property, and that a change to P E F zoning would be in conformance with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. And for that reason, I recommend that we approve application Z 12-21.
Second. That was a motion, I take it? And we have a second? Is there any more conversation about it? All those in favor, would you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That application is approved. Item number three, application Z 12-8. Staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, application relates to South High School, which is located on Magnolia Road, specifically addressed to 730 East Magnolia Road. And this particular high school was constructed in 1969, and it was actually constructed while the property was outside the city limits and then became a permitted use upon annexation. And when the current zoning ordinance was adopted in 1977, that moved new schools or newly constructed schools into the conditional use category. However, existing schools were still classified as permitted uses as long as they didn't expand beyond their original boundaries. And this property is the same configuration as when the school was first built in 1969. However, there were additions. There was a gymnasium addition built. There were softball diamonds and dugouts added out here. There was a major addition in 2002 that related to the auditorium and commons area and the addition of additional space. And so what we discussed with residents who, nearby residents who had inquired was that we explained that these improvements all took place without any type of public hearing or notice or a conditional use permit application because South High was, had the status of a permitted use. The one item here that was not a permitted use was the addition of a wireless communication facility tower right here adjacent to the athletic fields there. That was done under a special permit. There was an application filed. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on that, recommended approval, and the city commission ultimately approved that tower in that location. And that would continue to be the case, although I certainly can't imagine that there would be a need or desire for a second tower. But one of the things that the public use district maintains is that for proposals to construct wireless communication towers on public use properties, that public hearing aspect would remain in place. So the proposal that's before you as to South High School grounds would be to rezone it from R1 single-family to public use educational facilities. And so as we emphasize, that would not change the current status, which is a permitted use today. The only change would be that in the future, building projects would be subject to public use zoning rules instead of residential regulations. So again, if we look at South High, it's been there since 1969. It's a well-established use. We believe that the public use zoning designation would more clearly conform to the ownership and use of the property than residential zoning. This is an established use. There's no physical changes being proposed. There should be no impact on public facilities or services. And again, we believe that a change to public use educational facilities would be more in conformance with the future land use plan than the current R1 zoning. So our findings are again, that South High is an established public use in the neighborhood in which it's located. It appears to be functioning compatibly with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed public use zoning designation would more accurately reflect the ownership and use of the property than residential zoning, and it would be more in conformance with the comprehensive plan than the current zoning designation. With that, I'd be open to any questions you have about South High School.
Questions for staff? And USD 305, Amy, we'll ask you each time if you have any remarks. Is there anything about this particular application you have to say? Want us to know? Thank you very much. I'll open the public portion of commentary on this agenda item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment?
I would share that I was contacted by a citizen named John Olson, who lives at 214 Laura, near Coronado School. He was not interested or curious about Coronado School, but was curious about the sign that he saw at South High School. And so I explained to him the change and also directed him to some information on the city's website and encouraged him to look at the public use district content, which he did. And he didn't have any further comments or concerns. It was more curiosity. But although he's a neighbor of Coronado, his questions were about South High. He did ask about the tower, and I explained to him that that was done through a public hearing process and that that process would not change in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public, then? I'll close the public portion for item number three, bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, any remarks about staff recommendations? Hand a motion on this item.
In regard to case number Z 12-8, rezoning South High Campus from R1 to P educational facilities, public educational facilities, I would move that the staff findings be adopted and that the application be approved.
Say your second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries. Agenda item number four, the application Z 12-9, Central High School. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Central High School is in the same status category as South High School. It's actually much older and was, as some of you know, constructed as Salina High School and not as Central High School. It did not become Central High until South High was built. But the original construction occurred in 1950, and Salina Stadium that is on the grounds of Central High School was constructed in 1965. No conditional use permit was applied for or approved because schools were permitted uses in residential zoning districts at that time. So when the 1977 zoning ordinance was adopted, the Central High remained in the permitted use category. And there were additions done in 1960, 1988, and 1991, as well as some renovations made to Salina Stadium. In 2001, there were a number of improvements made to the Central High School building, including construction of additional space. In 2007, there was a locker room and fitness addition that was constructed on the east side of the school. And tennis courts were relocated as part of that. Again, all of that occurred with no public notice or public hearings because no conditional use permit was required. And so the application before you today is to change the zoning classification of Central High School from R1, single-family residential, to public use educational facilities. It would not change the current status of the school, which is a permitted use today and would be a permitted use if this changed. Again, the primary change was that future projects would be subject to the public use district regulations as well as the public use sign regulations. So again, if we look at a long-established use since 1950, we believe that the public use designation would more clearly conform to the ownership and use of the school site than residential zoning. This is a long-established public use in the neighborhood and has been compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Everyone is there, knows the high school's there, is aware of the stadium and the lighting and the things that come with that. So it's not a surprise that those facilities are there. There's no physical changes to the property being proposed, and certainly no additional demand on public services if this zoning change were approved. And again, a change to this public zoning designation would be more in conformance with the comprehensive plan than the current R1 zoning. So we have similar findings relating to this being established public use, that it is the proposed public use more accurately reflects the ownership and use of the school property to anybody looking at a zoning map, and that a change to public educational zoning would be more in conformance with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. And I just, we have made that similar finding, number two there, in terms of accuracy. But if, if you are, say, a prospective resident of Salina, and you're looking at neighborhoods and you're curious about zoning patterns or what's around the neighborhood that you're looking at, if you looked at our online zoning map today, you would not be able to really detect, you know, where Hughesner School was or where different schools were because we use a yellow color designation. As John, I guess you've got your colored maps there. I think you would probably discern the shape and all, but if you're just looking at areas of the community, basically the pattern, especially on the elementary schools, is you're not going to necessarily recognize that for what it is if you're looking at the zoning map. But if this were to change, then obviously this, this would stand out as being zoned, and that zoning would more clearly and accurately reflect what the property's actually being used for than the residential zone.
Comments to staff? Comments by the applicant, 305? I'll open the public portion on this item. Are there comments from interested citizens? Dean, have we had any communications on this item?
We did initially at the very first round of notices, as Ms. Lang referred to. One of the most common things and we, John has, I think, shown on this map how we've attempted to modify this by adding this terminology there. But one of the things that occurred with the very first mailing was that there were some individuals who were of the belief that this line represented campus expansion as opposed to notification. So since that clarification was made, we've had no comments from anybody in the immediate vicinity. A gentleman by the name of Mr. Brown, whose ancestors had the property acquired from them to build Central High, was concerned that it might be happening again. And we assured him that this boundary does not represent acquisition or expansion, but simply the area of individuals who were notified. And so that addressed his concern, and that's the only specific comment that I addressed on Central High.
Again, any comment from the public? I'll close the public portion on this item, bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, your remarks about the staff conclusions and/or a motion on this item?
I make a motion for approval of Z 12-9, based on designation that more accurately reflects the ownership, the use of the school property than current residential zoning, and that the zoning would be in conformance with the future land use map in the comprehensive plan.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries. Number five, application Z 12-10, South Middle School Campus. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. South Middle School is of a similar vintage and status as South High and Central High. South Middle School was originally constructed back in 1957. As Ms. Lang indicated, the school district current staff was very appreciative of the research that was done on some of the historical background of these schools. I would not have guessed that South Middle School was that old, but it was originally constructed in 1957, and it fell into the permitted use category as of the 1977 ordinance change. So the status of South Middle School is that of a permitted use. And there were additions constructed in 1963, 1981, and 1988. Because of crowding conditions, there were several occasions when temporary mobile classrooms were moved onto the site. There was no notice to neighboring property owners, and no public hearings were required or held regarding these school additions. In 2001, as part of the bond issue, there was about $11 million in renovations done at the school. At the time, the school had very little parking, and what parking it had was primarily a sand lot. And so there were paving improvements undertaken, there was expansion, there was improved parent drop-off areas. All of these improvements took place on the original school grounds, and therefore no conditional use permit was required, and there was no public notice and no public hearings. So this proposal in application Z 12-10 is a proposal to change the zoning classification of South Middle School from single-family residential to public use educational facilities. The zoning change would not change the current status. It's a permitted use today and would be under the new designation. However, the public use district rules and the public use sign district or the public use district sign regulations would apply. We've made similar findings here. This is a long-established use that appears to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and accepted by the neighborhood. The designation of public use would more clearly conform to the ownership and use of the school. And since it's shown as public, quasi-public on the future land use map, a change in zoning would more be in conformance with that land use plan than the current single-family residential zoning. So our staff findings are summarized there at the end of page three and top of page four. And we would recommend that the official zoning map be changed to include this property in the new district.
Questions of staff? Comments by the applicant? Are there comments from the public? I'll open the public portion. Are there interested citizens to comment on this item? Have we had communications?
Yes, we have. We have that in your packet. It's after the maps for South Middle School. And Mr. Rex Larson and his wife live across the street on the north. Well, let's see. They're on Gebhart, so they are, they are to the north, but on one of the side streets, I believe. This is Gebhart right here, and they're, they're just directly to the north of that as what they indicate is that they are objecting to the zoning change because they believe that the school district should have public notice and public hearing. that the school district should have public notice and public hearing and planning commission reviews and for construction or changes to their property. Any construction at the above site will affect my property and access to my property. And so, they have registered their objection to that, and our response, as indicated in our report and from the history of the improvements made to South Middle School, is that none of the previous improvements made on that campus over time did require any type of notice or public hearing. So, if the zoning classification of South Middle School would remain residential, that would not result in public hearings or notice because it does have a permitted use status. So, the only actual change in status here would be that the public use district rules would apply. But even if you were to not recommend South Middle School have a change in zoning classification, it would not result in a storage building or things of that nature requiring a notice and a public hearing.
Thank you. Again, any comments from the public? I'll close the public portion, bring this back to the commission for consideration. Gentlemen, the staff findings, they were, and a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Z-12-10 based on the compatibility of surrounding uses. Public use designation more accurately reflects the ownership and the use of the school property, and a public use zone would be in conformance with the future land use and comprehensive plan.
Is there a second?
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That item is approved. Number six, application Z-12-11, Lakewood Middle School. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is one of the schools that we identified in the right-hand column as a, would be a change in zoning status. And back in year 2000, USD number 305 purchased approximately 39-acre parcel west of Lakewood Park, and this was to serve as the site for a new middle school to replace the existing Roosevelt Lincoln facility on Mulberry. This property was already platted and zoned, but not in a configuration that would accommodate the creation of a new middle school campus. And it was kind of laid out for apartments and semi-industrial park uses and things like that, but it was quite carved up with small lots and interior streets and things of that nature. And as we indicated there, the zoning on the property at the time consisted of I-2, C-5, C-2, R-3, R-2.5, and R-2. And so, at the time, lacking a public use district, staff recommended that the property be rezoned to a uniform R-3 zoning designation, and which is the most intense residential district and gave the school district the most flexibility in terms of facility design, but which also, even in the R-3 district, schools are a conditional use. So, this is an example of a post-1977 school that was built under a conditional use permit, and the planning commission first reviewed the school district's rezoning request and secondly, a request for a conditional use permit related to a specific plan. But they found that because of the lack of frontage on and visibility from Ohio, the property wasn't really suitable or desirable for commercial development. They found that the city did not have a public use zoning district, and schools are not permitted or conditional in commercial or industrial districts. The R-3 zoning would accommodate the school district's plans and serve as a transition zone between Ohio and Lakewood Park, that there were adequate public facilities either in existence or would be provided, and the comprehensive plan showed this as a location of being suitable for public or quasi-public uses. So, planning commission recommended a change to uniform R-3 zoning. City commission concurred with that. A conditional use permit was approved by the planning commission, and one of the conditions was that development of the site shall substantially conform with the approved site plan, including building elevations, landscape plan, and drainage plan. And I believe, John, you have a copy of that plan. This is the approved site plan for Lakewood Middle School that the planning commission approved. To get your bearings, here's Ohio Street, Oshalands, the roadway coming in, parking areas, the school athletic fields over here, and the access drive out to North Street. And so, the way that the conditional use process would work is if there was a major revision to this plan, such as a plan to build a large parking lot here or to replace this and perhaps put up a large separate building there, then the process would be that if the change was significant enough, that there would be an amendment to the conditional use permit, there would be notice to neighboring property owners and a public hearing about whether those changes should be approved. Basically, the campus is unchanged since the plan was approved in 2000. But if you were to recommend that this be rezoned from multifamily residential to public use educational facilities, you would change the status of this from an approved conditional use to an approved permitted use, and the hearings would no longer be required. And essentially, you would lose that review, but it would also put it on the same footing and zoning status as South Middle School. So, one way to look at this is that the conditional use permit has served its purpose, because the purpose of that was to ensure that the campus was developed in accordance with the approved plan, and it has been. And so, what you need to decide in this case is whether you, as a commission, wish to retain some review of potential changes to this campus, or if you don't feel that's necessary or appropriate, then if this property were rezoned to public use, then it would be in the same status as South High, Central High, South Middle School. We looked at this, and certainly, the public use designation conforms to the ownership and use of this as a school site more closely than having it zoned multifamily residential. By virtue of being here since 2000, it is an established and accepted use. There's no physical changes to the property being proposed as part of this change in zoning, and once again, a change to public use educational facilities would be more in conformance with the future land use plan than the current multifamily residential zoning. So, while we recognize that this would be a change in status based on your action on South High, Central High, and South Middle School, if you were to approve this, you're essentially saying that you think this should have the same zoning status as those other three schools. So, with that, I'd be happy to address any questions. I said the primary distinction here is this is a post-1977 school.
Dean, does that include, didn't they do a little land swap deal right up there by that cul-de-sac?
They did.
Does this include?
That reflects that right here.
Okay.
The school boundary formerly went up like this, and so, this property's been transferred to Citywide Storage and Mark Augustine, and this formerly owned by them was transferred over to the school district. So, in the, in some of the introductory information on our overview, this was platted as all one lot, but with this land swap here, now part of the platted lot has been transferred here, and this is actually part of a different subdivision. So, before, we had a nice, neat legal description, and now the legal description is modified due to that ownership change.
Public facilities are only supposed to occupy 50% of the land, Matt?
No, they can cover up to 80%.
Eighty.
Site coverage, so.
That one's, looks tight to me.
Well, there's actually quite a bit of green space here and down in this area, but when you think about the fact that they have about 39 acres, they have quite a bit of campus to work with there. It's quite a bit larger than South Middle School's campus.
Other questions of staff? Comments from the applicant? I'll open the public portion. Is there comments from the public? And are there communications on this item?
We did not have any communication that we recorded either inquiries or concerns expressed by citizens or anything submitted in writing related to Lakewood.
I will close the public comment portion of this, bring it back to the commission, commissioners' comments and/or motion.
I would move that we approve application Z-12-11, rezoning Lakewood Middle School from R-3 to public use educational facilities, particularly so that it reflects conformance with the rest of the school properties.
Second? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The item is approved. Number seven, application Z-12-12, Coronado.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our first elementary school, and so, when we set this up, we decided to start with high schools, the middle schools, and now Coronado is the first elementary school. Coronado was constructed in 1963, and there was no conditional use permit applied for or approved at the time because it was a, considered a permitted use when constructed, and therefore, 1977, it retained that permitted use status. We found that additions were constructed in 1975, 1979, and 1987. There was no notice or hearing process for reviewing those improvements. As part of the school bond issue, there were about $4 million in improvements made to the school building, including construction of additional space, drop-off area, not a pull-off, but sidewalk improvements along Neal, staff and visitor parking constructed along Ray Avenue. And again, because this was a pre-1977 school, there were no hearings, no conditional use permit required, no notice to neighboring property owners or review by the planning commission. So, this application is a proposal to change the zoning of Coronado School from single-family residential to public use educational facilities, and it wouldn't change the current status, which is a permitted use today. The change would be that public use zoning rules would apply to future projects instead of residential rules. And so, again, being built in 1963, this is a well-established public use in the neighborhood. We believe the public use designation more clearly conforms to the ownership and use of the site than residential designation. There's no physical changes to the property being proposed at this time. There's no burden added to services or utilities, and again, we believe that the change to public use educational facility zoning would be more in conformance with the future land use plan than the present single-family residential zoning.
Comments from the applicant? Is there public comment on this item? If being none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, are there comments or emotion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, in finding an agreement with the staff recommendations, I recommend that we approve application Z-12-12.
Second?
Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Whittier School addition. Number eight, application Z-12-13, Cottonwood Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This school is in similar category as Lakewood Middle School that you looked at earlier. This Cottonwood School is a post-1977 school, and in January 2000, as part of the bond issue, USD number 305 filed an application for a conditional use permit to construct a new school on the south side of Walnut between Baker and Phillips. And this block was immediately north of the then-existing Whittier School, which was right here. And at the time, the school district purchased and cleared 18 homes to create a building site for the new school, and the school is designed to serve about 450 students, and the plan was that the schools would remain in service side by side. Sunset students were temporarily moved to Whittier School while Sunset was being renovated. Then, following completion of the work at Sunset, Whittier School was demolished. The plat for this area, which was done in conjunction with the conditional use permit, vacated Cedar Street here, and interestingly enough, the plat that this occupies is called the Whittier School addition, and it wasn't till late in the process that there was a movement to rename the school from Whittier to Cottonwood, and so, the plat that it occupies is actually still refers to the Whittier School addition. But in February of 2000, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit, and the planning commission found that the campus expansion would contribute to and promote the welfare and convenience of the public by providing increased space for educational programs, that construction of the new school would not cause injury to the surrounding neighborhood, and that the plan for Cottonwood would actually improve traffic flow and parking situation. One of the things we might point out is along with schools being a permitted use pre-1977, pre-1977, schools were not required to provide off-street parking. So, in many of these situations, the 2000 improvements made to the various schools around the city also involved improvements to parent drop-off and parking for staff members to get them off the street. So, in many cases, the neighbors viewed that as an improvement because the faculty and staff parking was removed from street congestion to actually being parked on the school site. And so, Cottonwood was one of those. Whittier had little or no off-street parking, and the Cottonwood plan provides that. So, Cottonwood, that would be a change in status from conditional use to permitted use, and the result of that change in status is if there were physical changes to this campus or a new parking area or a large building proposed at the south end, those would not be going to the planning commission for review, and there would be no notice to neighboring property owners. So, this is another school that would be a change in status. However, if you were to approve the zoning change, it would put Cottonwood on the same status as Coronado and many of the other schools. So, our findings remain the same, that the public use designation would more clearly conform with the ownership and use of the school than residential zoning. This is a well-established public use in this neighborhood, and that a change in zoning designation would be more in conformance with the comprehensive plan than the current R-2 zoning. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about Cottonwood School.
Questions for staff? Comments from the applicant? I'll open the public portion on this particular application. Are there any comments? Are there any comments from the public? Any communications on this?
We did not receive any written correspondence and no, I don't recall any phone calls, even asking for clarification. But if we had received anything, it would be in your packet. And we don't have anything of record for Cottonwood School.
Thank you. I'll close the public portion and bring this back to the commission. Gentlemen, other comments about the staff conclusions or a motion to approve?
Chairman, I would approve.
Chairman, I would move that case number twelve dash thirteen, rezoning Cottonwood Elementary School from R two multifamily residential to public use educational facility be approved with three findings, that the school sites an established public use in the neighborhood in which it is located and is compatible with the surrounding uses. The proposed public use zoning designation more accurately reflects the ownership and use of the school property, and that the change to the public educational facility zoning would be in conformance with the land use plan.
Second. Thank you. Any other comments? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item also passes. Item number, where are we, nine? Number nine, application Z twelve fourteen, Husener.
This is an application that relates to Husener School, which is located at thirteen hundred Norton Street near just west of Roach and just to the east of Quincy Street. And this is a six-point-six-five acre site. And Husener School was constructed in nineteen forty-nine. It was a permitted use at the time of construction. And when the nineteen seventy-seven ordinance change occurred, it continued to be a permitted use. There were additions constructed in nineteen fifty-three, nineteen fifty-six, nineteen ninety-one, and nineteen ninety-four. And because of its permitted use status, there was no notice or public hearings involved in any of those improvements. Again, as part of the bond issue for USD three oh five, there was about three million dollars in improvements made to Husener School. And again, because it was a pre-nineteen seventy-seven permitted use, all those took place without any planning commission review or public notice or public hearings. So if you were to approve this change from R one, single-family residential to public use educational facilities, you would not be changing the current status of Husener School, which is permitted use today and would be a permitted use under public use designation. And again, our findings are dating to nineteen forty-nine. This is a well-established public use in the neighborhood and appears to get along well with its neighborhood setting. There's no physical changes to the school or boundaries being proposed. And the future land use map designates this as public use. And with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about Husener School. We did have an individual, it's in your packet, an owner on Quincy. And again, their concern was that they did not want the school district to take their property. And so it was explained to them that that was not part of this application. That is not in the cards in terms of expanding beyond existing boundaries. And their response was that they were still against the change. So it is not an expansion of the boundaries of Husener School. And if there were such a thing, that would involve a public hearing. But this individual on Quincy wanted to register the fact that they are still against it.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Remarks from the applicant? I'll open the public portion on the Husener item. Is there any comment from the public? With the one objection noted. If being none, I'll close the public portion on this application. Bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, is there a motion on this item?
This is not a part of my motion, but I want to preface the motion by saying that I think the use that has been made by the public thus far is pretty darn good. My grandkids go down there occasionally and play on the playground equipment. Nobody's kicked them off there yet. So I would move that we approve application C twelve fourteen, rezone Husener Elementary School property from single-family residential to public use educational facilities.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I'm more concerned about the speed trap on Republic.
Yes. Do we have jurisdiction over that one?
No. Yeah.
That item also carries. Number ten, application Z twelve fifteen.
That would bring us to.
Metalarc?
Metalarc Ridge Elementary School. And this one is also just a little bit more complicated or out of the norm. If we'll focus on the south side first, but Metalarc Ridge Elementary School was constructed in nineteen sixty-two. So it is a pre-nineteen seventy-seven use. And so the school grounds, the principal school grounds itself, which are here, are basically in the permitted use category. And there were additions constructed in nineteen seventy-three, nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-seven, and nineteen ninety-four. And there have been periods of very fast enrollment growth at Metalarc School at different times. And there was no notice to neighboring property owners, no planning commission review, no public hearings in regard to that. There were about four million dollars in improvements made in two thousand as part of the bond issue for the school district. And again, because Metalarc School was a pre-nineteen seventy-seven permitted use, those improvements all took place without public notice or hearings or planning commission review. However, on the north side of the street, USD three oh five acquired some property that was previously platted primarily for single-family development. And as part of that, they applied for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a parking lot and playing fields on the north side of Glen Avenue, directly north of the school. And because this was elementary schools and parking lots that served them were a conditional use in residential districts, they had to apply for and receive approval of a conditional use permit. So in October seventeenth, two thousand, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit. And John, I think you have the plan that that relates to.
I think I have the the south portion. We'll see here.
It just barely shows. This is the parking lot. This was the subject of the conditional use permit. But there's, we'll have to go back to the aerial photo to see the rest of it. But the planning commission had three conditions that they asked, that the driveway entrance on Fairdale be shifted to the north, which it was. They asked that any parking lot lighting be downcast and directed away from surrounding homes, which it was. And then there was a revised site plan provided and indicated the location of, there's a mid-block crossing there between the parking lot and the school. And then there was also a replat of the property done to basically put it into one lot and block. So if you can envision at the time, there was tennis courts right here. And that was part of the purchase that the school district made, but they didn't have use for the tennis courts. So they sold this off, and a house was eventually constructed there. So the school district actually acquired to here. They sold this off, retained this for playing fields, and have parking here. There's an oil well sitting right in the middle of this cul-de-sac here. And it runs over to a tank battery over here. And so that oil well is preventing the construction of this street, which nobody's really all that interested in having it constructed for anyway because this was originally designed to be single-family home lots. And the school district is now the owner. So the, if you look at the south side of Glen, then there really is no change. The status of this, we'll call it the south campus, is it's a permitted use today. Changes have occurred on there without notice and public hearing. However, on this side, it is currently subject to a conditional use permit. And if the zoning designation were changed to public use, then it would no longer be subject to planning commission review or notice and hearing. And so the approved uses are parking here and essentially playing fields here and up in that area. So did want to clarify that there is a difference between the two sides in terms of their current status and their potential future status. The USD three oh five has indicated that they're interested in having the public use designation on both sides. And so the application includes both sides of Glen Avenue. And so we do still believe that the public use zoning designation would more clearly conform to the ownership and use of this site, both sides of Glen, than the residential designation. I don't think it likely that this will ever be sold off or there'd be any attempt to develop that for residential housing. There's no physical changes to any of the school improvements proposed as part of this change. And the future land use map shows this site as public and quasi-public use. And so a change to public use educational facilities zoning would be more in conformance with the future land use plan than the current single-family residential zoning. Related to this application, at least for what we have a record of, you have the various plans. John is not able to bring the one up for the north side. But in your Metalarc packet, there is a drawing that shows new parking and playing fields to the north of that, in that green space there. And if you look at that carefully, it still shows the, the plan shows the tennis courts that were in existence at that particular time. The one comment that we have received is a gentleman that lives on West Hillside Terrace named Darrell Shuts. And he has indicated that he is in opposition to rezoning the north side of the property. I don't know exactly which of these homes, but he expressed concern about any school improvements being able to move closer to his residence without a public notice and hearing. That was the only comment that we received related to Metalarc Elementary. And so we treated the property, even though it's bisected by a street, we treated this as the Metalarc School campus, which is bisected. But the status here is conditional use today. The status here is permitted use today. And if this change were approved, all of this would be public use, and it would be the same status. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about Metalarc School.
Questions of staff?
So if somebody could, if that gentleman lived on West Hillside Terrace, if they wanted to build a storage building in that back, let me get my bearing straight, northwest corner behind the existing house where the tennis courts used to be.
Say right in here.
If they wanted to build a storage facility there, currently, they would have to apply for a conditional use permit. But if it's rezoned, they would not have to. Is that correct?
That is correct, except the primary thing that would be different is that the one thing we did with the public use district and looking at the fire station over there at Marymount in Crawford was that you built in buffers into the public use district. So if this was a residential lot and somebody wanted to build a garage, he could build it within five feet of a rear line or three foot of a sideline. This, the public use district requires a twenty-five-foot buffer between any buildings and a budding residential property line. So if they did build a building here, they would actually have to keep it farther away than if it was, if this were a residential lot and somebody wanted to have a storage building, they could actually locate it closer. But that is correct.
But storage buildings on residential lots are limited more so than storage buildings.
That is also correct.
At size.
They would be, if it was a garage, it would be limited to twenty-four by thirty-two. If it were a shed, not a garage, it would be limited to three hundred and sixty square feet. So in the public use district, dealing with the storage needs of a school site, that is one of the things that those residential limitations that apply to residential lots would not apply, the size limitation.
And did the school district give you any other indications? And maybe they could speak to the reason of why they want to pull that particular part in as well? I mean, I can see the campus around there. I am concerned about the citizens back there. And you can say, well, the school was probably always there. So they knew that the school was there when they built their homes or purchased them. But I would imagine that that open field, when they purchased their home, possibly may have thought, if they lived there long enough, that that was residential. And so it didn't, then it got changed to, the school bought it.
And I might let Ms. Lang address any plans or visions that the school district might have. The plan that you have in your packet shows the parking down close to the school and a basically future plane there. The, I can't, I can't see where they'd want to get buildings or things like that. Too remote from where their street access is. But I can simply tell you that the school district and the school board indicated that they wanted the application for Metalarc School to include the entire parcel, even though it's bisected by that street. But we did want to make that distinction, that the south of Glen is pre-nineteen seventy-seven permitted use status, and north of Glen is post-nineteen seventy-seven conditional use status.
Any other questions of staff?
Long-range question. If that or when that oil well is eventually abandoned, does that street, little cul-de-sac there, I think it's called Hillside Terrace, would that automatically be abandoned and closed and the property distributed to the school site and the two residences? Or would those three property owners have to apply to have that street closed?
It would not be automatic, but my guess is this is primarily there to maintain access to the oil well. If the oil well were removed, if I were USD three oh five and these two owners, I would probably be motivated to file a vacation petition and ask for that right away to be vacated, in which case. in which case, if, if that were vacated, then it would revert back half here, half there, and this portion would revert back to the school district.
Well, while we're on that subject, what about the pipe and the, and the reservoir tank on the other side of the street?
Well, um...
If you were moving that, wouldn't you remove it?
There, there is some language on the plat that relates to that, but basically, as long as this is here, this is here, and it's, it's blocking Glen, but if, if this were removed, then there would have to be a, a decision made at that time whether Glen should be extended through, but the primary reason Glen is not extended through is because of that tank battery there, that, that pre-existed. These, those obstacles were there when the property was originally platted, and the, the oil company being there first, their rights trump everybody else's rights. So, it, really, nothing can happen until the oil company decides they're done with it. And then, Amy, isn't it correct that the school district owns this property right here?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you've got a residence here, you've got, this is right-of-way for Glen, but it's blocked by the, the tank battery and storage, and then this is a residential lot here that the school district just happens to own.
May we hear from the applicant?
To answer any questions about intentions of the school district regarding the north part of the parking, of the, where the parking lot is on the north side of Glen, we do not have any intention of ever developing those lots as residential. And at present time, we have no development plans to add any structures or any additional playing fields on that, on that property. So at present, the, the plans are to leave the property as it is right now, make no physical modifications, and we do not have any intentions to, to develop it residentially in the future. But again, as I stated before, we, we do intend to be as good a neighbors as possible, as we possibly can, and, and make our intentions known, known to those around it. So, would definitely encourage you to consider the public educational facility use zoning on here. One of the reasons for that is that we are pretty landlocked with the south side of our campus, and having that additional space available as far as playing fields and parking space does afford us to have a little bit more space available. Typically, what you see now with development of elementary schools is a 20-acre site is about perfect for an elementary school the size. The south campus plus the north campus equals just over 10 acres for us, and if we were to exclude and sell off the north part, portion and develop that residentially, the south campus would leave us with just over seven acres, which is a very, very, very tight site for an elementary school. So we definitely need to include the area with the north parking lot, the area north of Glen, in our Metal Arc campus, and would certainly appreciate rezoning that to public educational facility use as well. Any other questions?
Amy, can you tell me what procedure the district uses? If, if, when the, when they are going to build a building someplace, do they, do they have a notification process? Do you include the neighbors in a planning session?
It, it kind of depends on what's going on. First off, we follow the city's process as far as if there's any zoning requirements for notifications, kind of a first baseline, and then it would depend on what's going on. For, for example, if we were going through a bond issue that required additions to building, absolutely there would be public notification, and public would be involved in it. If it was a simple minor building addition or renovation that did not require by way of zoning a notification to the public, then no, the only notification that we would have is publications of building permits that come through in the local paper saying that we've obtained a building permit.
Thank you. I'm not sure how to, I guess my only reservation is on there is none now, but I could see in the future with, and Dean may have to give clarification on this, but let's say the school district decided that their new maintenance facility was too far west, or whatever they have now, and they wanted to build a 30 by 60 Morton-type building in that area. Under the current zoning, they would, they would have to apply for that conditional use permit, is that correct, Dean?
Since the approved site plan that's in your packet there does not include any buildings, but is only for parking and playing fields, then if, if they were to build a building that large, then what they would have to do is, is amend their 2,000 conditional use permit to allow construction of a, of a large maintenance or storage building.
In today's, as we speak today?
Yes, because the, the conditional use permit that was approved was for off-street parking and for playing fields.
And if approved on that section, if later on a date, 20 years from now, they felt they wanted to build a maintenance facility to store equipment on the east side of town to take care of other properties, and they found that they had that, they could build a 30 by 60 utility building with this current setbacks of what we've set for, but they could build that without any notification to the public around it, is that correct?
That is correct, if the building was there to store equipment related to the upkeep of Metal Arc School. They couldn't, they couldn't build an east-side maintenance facility because the, the public use educational facility district lists maintenance, a maintenance facility that's not a building that's in support of a school, that is a conditional use in and of itself. So...
It would trigger a hearing.
Right, if, but it, it's, it's a matter of degree. I mean, churches, schools, many institutional uses like that, that have snow removal equipment or lawn mowers or things like that, they build accessory buildings on their campuses to store those things. So, you would have to decide whether you think that that would be unusual or unexpected for, and again, since they have to access it, I can't see the school district tucking a building way back in here. If, if they build a storage building, it's probably going to be here or, or here, but it would be a matter of degree. If it's a storage building to store snow removal equipment, lawn mowers, related to upkeep of Metal Arc School, that is a permitted accessory building. If they said, "We need a USD 305 maintenance facility for east of the river," then that would be a conditional use permit in and of itself. It, it's just a matter of degree. But most of the elementary schools that I'm familiar with have some sort of shed or maintenance building for mowers and snow removal equipment and things of that nature. And that would have to conform with, with the buffering requirements, but otherwise, if you have public use educational facility zoning in place, then putting up a storage building is a matter of applying for a building permit and meeting zoning setback and building code requirements.
Any other remarks, questions for Ms. Lang?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the public? We'll open the public forum. Any comments from the public on this application? And we had a protest that's noted, are there any other communications on this?
We didn't have any other communication related to that, other than Mr. Shuts who lives on West Hillside Terrace, which is this street right here. We didn't get any comments from anybody on, on Hillside Drive, and our other notification area was, was here.
I will close the public portion and bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, is there further comment on this, or an emotion?
It seems like if there's zoning permitted to build a parking lot and playing fields on north side, and there's no indication from the school district that they're going to do anything but what they, they've presently done, and what's the purpose of, of making it continue, or changing the zoning for it? Why, why would we want to just leave it like it is and just work on the south half?
I agree with that. I think it ought to be left all as one parcel. I don't think a street down the middle makes any difference, and...
I don't, I don't understand...
Trust your schools, that's what I think.
I mean, I, I look forward into the future, and it looks like if something, something were to come up, we've made a decision to, to rezone that so they can do basically what they want to with it. But they're telling us, I mean, at this time, there's no, no, no intention to change it from what it is, or, you know, from being a, either playing field or parking lot, but we're opening up the door to, to allow it to be changed in the future. Why wouldn't we just, if there's no intention to change it, then why wouldn't we let another planning and zoning commission make that decision in the future, and, and just change the zoning on the south half? See what I'm saying?
You're saying just do the south?
Just do the south half. I, I don't know that it's, I don't know.
Yeah, I think you guys are talking two different things. You're, you're the one thing I know.
I think they should keep it all the same zoning as one piece.
Yeah, I, well, I understand your point, John, I, I really do, but...
I'm not confused with what, with, why we would want to take this decision today when...
But, but one of the other things that the school district needs, and, and maybe Amy could talk a little bit more of this, I think they need a little bit of flexibility, you know, if, if there was some growth in that area and they needed to do something over there, I don't really see a, a maintenance building for a seven-acre facility being a 30 by 60 building, ever, and, and, but, but I do think, you know, if, if the need came along for an accessory building of some kind, that would give them the, the flexibility to do that, and certainly, all the places to build, I don't think in that, that northwest corner up there would be a place that they would, would want to build something in regards to the protest letter, but, but I, I think, I guess, in, in terms of trusting the school to do the correct thing, and, and also give them some flexibility, and certainly, they've been good stewards of the, the properties that they've taken care of in the city in the past, I would vote to keep it all as one.
I think I understand what John's concerns are, and being a former school teacher, you got to be careful about those administrators, you want to watch them every minute, but...
That's not my point.
I know, I know, but I, I...
Jerry's not here, right?
I say that, of course, tongue-in-cheek, knowing that it will be recorded in the minutes, but nonetheless. But Amy's point about it being, having not even close to a 20-acre site, I think, is, is a, a good point, and I agree with what Pat is saying, that we might give them flexibility. Who knows, they might want to put in a garden there, and I guess they don't have to come to the planning commission to put in a community garden, but in terms of school and educational flexibility, it seems to me that's a reasonable argument to make, even though I understand the concern.
I'm just concerned, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I, I was just suggesting that there may be a, a different way to look at it.
Yeah, I just wanted it noted on there, not that I wouldn't support a, a motion to approve it to be all there, I just wanted it to be noted in the minutes that, obviously, I'm more concerned than the people who live around there, and so if they're not that concerned, then they've been notified, but if, but if Dean's correct, if they do put a storage facility in there, in that area closest to the parking lot, that particular home, it's right in their front door. But again, if they're not here to, if they're not here with a concern, then I'm not concerned, and, and it could be in the best interest to have it all as one group together, as, as Chairman Ryan had, had talked about, so...
And, and again, even if they tucked a building right here, it would, it would have to stay 25 feet off the property line and 25 feet off of Glen, so they're, they would pretty much have to center it, so it's, it's not going to appear that it's, it's right next door to the existing home. There, it's designed to have...
Let's move on.
Designed to have buffers. But our, our report, our findings, and the request of the school district and the school board was to asking that irrespective of Glen Avenue, that this be treated as, as a 10-acre Metal Arc School campus. And so our, our findings relate to the entire property, although we did want to point out to you that there is a cha, a change in status for the north half.
All right then, is there a motion on this item? We'll just take it up or down.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, in agreement with the staff findings, I would make a motion to approve application Z 12-15.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Any opposed that item carries?
And for the record, that recommendation includes this legal description and...
Both tracks.
As presented.
As presented.
Yes. Both tracks. Application Z 12-16, Oakdale Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oakdale School falls in the same category as Cottonwood and Lakewood and the area north of Glen that we discussed. There was an acquisition of property that occurred back in 2000, and the, the Oakdale School property expanded, and if we're, if we're talking historic schools, the original Oakdale School building was built in 1930, and it was constructed in phases. In 1964, there was a kitchen lunchroom addition on the east side, and in December of 1999, in anticipation of the bond issue, there was a major renovation and expansion of the Oakdale School building and school grounds. And so, at the time, there were mobile classrooms, and there was a lunchroom addition on the east side. Those were to be removed, and a, a large two-story addition built in its place, and the proposed addition increased the size of the building to 38,771 square feet. And as part of that plan, it spent, essentially, the campus expanded east of Columbia Avenue, and Columbia Avenue was closed and vacated and converted to school district property. And again, because we were, it's a post-1977 expansion on the property that wasn't previously used for school purposes, there was a conditional use permit application filed in a public hearing. And so I think you're aware of, of many of the changes over here. What occurred was the, with the closure of Hawthorne School, the Oakdale enrollment area was quite large, there was quite a bit of busing involved, and so they had to design an area here that was conducive to busing and bus drop-off, and then the small playground existed north of the building, that was replaced by parking, and now you, you see a very generous play area here. So for your bearings, this is Iron, Penn, Johnstown, and Columbia used to run through right there, this is Kansas Avenue. So this was housing area, and that property was acquired, and an expansion of playground area there, former playground converted to parking, the bus drop-off area here, and a, and a major addition to the school. So on January 18th, 2000, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit for this plan, with a condition that development of the site conform with the approved site plan, building elevations, landscape plan, and paving plan. And so this would be a change in status. Again, this is the approved site plan for Oakdale School, and if this were changed to public use, we're back to having that discussion again. If they wanted to construct a storage building right here, or, or over in here, that would not, if it was no longer a conditional use, or under a conditional use permit, that would no longer have to be reviewed by the planning commission, there would be no notice to owners. It would put Oakdale School on the same status as the other elementary schools, as, as a permitted use. And so, again, we, we think this campus is pretty firmly established, and it's firmly established in the neighborhood, and don't, no one foresees it expanding any further. So certainly, this is a, an established public use in the neighborhood. The public use designation would more closely conform to the ownership and use of the property, and a change to public use educational facility zoning would be more in conformance with the future land use plan than the current R1 and R2 zoning. So again, this would be a change in status, but the change in status would make it consistent with the majority of other elementary schools. But we, we just had that discussion with the Metal Arc site, and that is the primary change in status, is that if it's a permitted use and no longer under a conditional use permit, then the things that are allowed are allowed as of right.
Questions of staff? Would the applicant like to comment? I'll open the public portion on this application. Is there any comment from interested citizens?
We did not receive any, or any recorded position taken by any of the neighbors, or receive any written correspondence on Oakdale School.
Thank you. We'll close the public portion on this application, bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, are you in conformance with the staff recommendations, and is there a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve Z 12-16... Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve Z-12-16 based on the findings of staff, as stated by staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 12, application Z-12-17, Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a little bit different. I think there's another thing that our research was helpful to USD 305, just in terms of the origin of the school. But the Schilling Elementary School was constructed by the federal government in 1959, and was later purchased in its entirety by USD number 305 in 1970 as a pre-1977 school. It has operated as a permitted use, and there have been additions made in 1960, 1963, and again in 2000, and there were no Planning Commission reviews, no notice, no hearings to review those improvements. The school presently consists of 23 classrooms, a kindergarten room, and a library. This proposal would change the zoning classification of Schilling from R1, single-family, to public use educational facilities, and the current status would not change. It's a permitted use today. It would be a permitted use under public use designation, but just subject to public use rules and regulations, instead of residential rules and regulations. The one difference is that we are rezoning existing conditions with no physical changes to the property, but for whatever reason, historically, I think it had to do with some of the other properties being turned over to private hands after the airbase closure. But the...all of this property around the school, this is platted, obviously, this is platted over here, this is Fox Run addition, but this is identified on the plat as accepted area, and it's not part of a subdivision, and it has a meets and bounds description. And the only difference here is that our recommendation would be that if you recommend approval of a zoning change to public use educational facilities, that the plating requirement in Section 42.8 be waived as to this property. The boundaries are well established, there's nothing about this that really triggers a need at this point in time for the property to be platted. This is the only school property that you have in front of you today that is not on a platted lot and block. But for whatever reason, perhaps with the federal government retaining ownership of the school, when the Fox Run addition was done, this was accepted out from all the plating and has remained unplatted since the Air Force had it.
Questions of staff? Are there comments from the applicant? I'll open the public portion of the application. Are there any comments from the public? There being none, are there any communications on this item, Dean?
We did not receive any inquiries that I'm aware of. Destin or John, did you receive anything from anybody? We did not receive written correspondence, or anybody who took a position on Schilling School.
Bring it back to the commission and close the public portion. Gentlemen, is there further comment on this item, or a motion to approve?
I would move that we approve application Z-12-17 and rezone Schilling Elementary School from R1 to public use, PEF.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This item also carries. Move on to number 13, Z-12-18, Stewart Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stewart School is also a pre-1977 school, having been constructed in 1959, and as such, it was a permitted use when built, and was permitted as of 1977, when the new ordinance was adopted. There have been several additions and modifications to the school over time, none of which required notice to neighboring owners, or public hearings, or Planning Commission review. If the zoning of this property were changed to public use, there would be no change in status. It's a permitted school use today, and would continue to be a permitted use under public use designation, but just subject to different rules and regulations. So we think the same findings apply. It's a 1959 school, it's well-established in the neighborhood, and has been compatible with its neighbors. There's no physical changes to the property, no increased demand on utilities or services, and certainly a change to public use educational facilities would be more in conformance with the comprehensive plan than single-family residential zoning.
Any questions of staff? Would the applicant like to comment? I'll open the public portion of this application. Is there any comment from interested citizens? Any communications on this?
And again, we didn't have any written communication, and nothing we recorded in terms of anybody taking a position on the rezoning request.
There being no any other comments, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Gentlemen, is there a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application Z-12-18 with the...in conformance with the staff findings.
Is there a second? Please?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries...that item carries as well. Application Z-12-19, Sunset Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this falls in the same category as Stewart and many of our other elementary schools. Sunset Elementary dates back to 1953, was the time of construction. It was permitted at that time, in a permitted use status, and that did not change in 1977. There have been a number of modifications to the school since that time, none of which in 1954, 59, or 91 resulted in a requirement for notifying owners, or public hearings, or review by the Planning Commission. If this request for rezoning from single-family residential to public use educational facilities were approved, it would not change the status of Sunset School, which is a permitted use today, and would be a permitted use with the change, simply subject to different rules and regulations. So again, we think the same findings apply. It's a well-established public use in the neighborhood, is compatible with the surrounding residential uses, and the public use zoning would certainly more accurately reflect how it's owned and used today, and would be more consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Questions of staff? Comments from the applicant? I'll open the public portion of this application. Is there any comment from the public? There being none, any communications on this?
We did not receive any communication, written, or otherwise taking a position on Stewart School. I'll double-check with John or Destin if they fielded any calls, but anything that we got communicated to us in writing, we included with the packet with that portion of the school. So we did not have anything correspondence-wise from Sunset.
I think we're on Sunset, Dean. Aren't we?
Sunset.
Yes, we're talking about Sunset. Did I misspeak?
You said Stewart.
Okay.
My packet says Stewart on... East hand is corrected.
But we're on 19, that's Sunset.
Yeah, the application of Z-12-19 related to Sunset Elementary?
Yeah. All right, then. If there's no comments, then from the public, we'll close the public portion and bring that back to the commission. Gentlemen, is there further conversation, or a motion to approve this item?
I move the case Z-12-19, rezoning Sunset Elementary School from R1 to public use educational facilities, be approved on the basis of the staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This item is also approved. Number 15, application Z-12-20, Heartland Early Education Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is application Z-12-20. It relates to the former Kennedy Elementary School, now referred to as the Heartland Early Education Center, and it's located at 700 Jupiter. Historically, this school was built in 1962, and it was a permitted use at the time of its construction, and has, as a pre-1977 school, has remained as a permitted use. There were additions that were constructed in 1979 and 1996, and then shortly thereafter, Kennedy School closed, and the Unified School District number 305 moved their Head Start program and other early education programs into the facility in 2001. There were some improvements made to the facility in terms of adding conference room and classroom areas. But again, the former Kennedy School was a pre-1977 permitted use. All of these improvements took place without notice and public hearing to surrounding owners, and so there, again, would be no change in the zoning status of this Heartland Early Education Center. It's a permitted use today. If it were changed to public use educational facilities, it would continue to be a public permitted use, and would be subject to public use regulations, instead of single-family residential regulations. So given the 1962 origin of the school, its long-established public use in the neighborhood, and the fact that it continues to be owned and operated by Unified School District number 305, and the comprehensive plan shows it as a public, quasi-public land use, we think the same findings apply to this school site.
Questions of staff? Comments from the applicant? I'll open the public portion. Is there any comment from interested citizens? There being none, I'll ask if there were communications on this item.
We do not have any communications from any neighbors taking a position on this, either written or otherwise.
I'll close the public portion on this application, bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, is there a motion on this item?
Chairman Ryan, I make a motion for approval of Z-12-20, based off staff's recommendation.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item also carries. Number 16, Something Different, application PDD 11 3A, filed by Jones and Gillum on behalf of USD 305, concerning the alternative school and the Hegeman Operations Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something new and different, it's not an existing school property, and so we have before you an application to have approval of a final development plan for Phase 2 of what's referred to as the USD number 305 Hegeman Operations Center. And this is a planned development district, and back in 2010, the school district owned the Hegeman School site here, but they pieced together and purchased all of the Kronberger family's remaining landholder...holdings in this area, which included a former mobile home park site. And in July 2011, they filed a request for a planned development district to create a campus on a single lot here. And we've outlined for you the planned development district process, but you conducted a public hearing on their overall plan, and you can see the picture on the screen. That is what comprises the campus area for the Hegeman Operations Center. And in their initial application, they requested approval of a preliminary development plan. And I may need to look at...I think what we need to look at, John, is number three, slide three. And this is the campus preliminary plan that you reviewed in 2011. And so what they requested was approval of an overall preliminary plan for Phases 1, 2, and 3, and a final plan for Phase 1, which is this area right here, which is presently under construction. And that is a 43,000-square-foot maintenance facility warehouse building with accessory parking. Phases 2 and 3 were identified as an alternative school, and possibly a special education school in the northwest corner of the property, but there was no timetable given at that time. And so, there's also a piece, this has since been cleared, but there's also a piece down in this corner, and there are no specific development plans for that southeast corner. But on August 16th, 2011, you conducted a public hearing on this application. You permitted a planned development district, and the uses permitted are outlined on page three of your report. There were a number of other conditions involved, which have all been fulfilled. One of those conditions was completion of the plating of the property into one lot and block, and that has occurred as the one lot, one block Hegeman addition, and you approved that plat on November 1st, 2011. On November 21st, 2011, the City Commission concurred with the action of the Planning Commission, and they approved a motion that approved a break in access here on Broadway Boulevard to allow right-in, right-out entrance to accept the offered easement and right-ofway dedications. We've got a number of easements that run through here, and also an easement for detention basin there. And they also approved an ordinance rezoning this to planned development district. As you're aware, Phase 1 is currently under construction. Now we have a plan moving forward for Phase 2, and plans have been submitted for an alternative school north of the new maintenance facility. And so to get your bearings, this has got north at the left-hand side and not at the top, but this is Broadway, this is the maintenance facility under construction, this is the former Hegeman School, there's a detention basin over here, this is undeveloped with no immediate plans, and this is Cloud and Hegeman Corner. And the plan is to construct an alternative school in this location, with a potential for additional classroom facility there, and parking to serve that facility there. So one of the things that the original plan called for was an 11,200-square-foot alternative school. This plan is for 17,310 square feet with a partial basement. It would be a pre-engineered metal building with block fascia, and would be similar in design, color, and appearance to the maintenance facility. And we have some partial elevations of that that were attached to that site plan. But your purpose for reviewing this today is to focus on the architectural appearance of the building, its compatibility with the surroundings, proposed landscaping, how site drainage, site lighting, and parking are being addressed. And so one of the things that we review is, is there an increase in floor area of more than 10%? In this case, the primary changes are a 6,000-square-foot increase from what was shown on the preliminary plan, and if you factor in the future classroom addition at the bottom of page five there, you could see that the total build-out would be 28,500 square feet, as opposed to the 17,000 that was discussed earlier at the preliminary hearing. The other thing that has changed is, and I don't...it's item or slide... The other thing that has changed is, and I don't, it's item, or Slide Three there, John. One of the things that was proposed on this plan was the construction of kind of an artery here coming down from Cloud and tying in here, and then the parking was shown up in this area. If you go back to the proposed plan, John, that is a change in terms of the access to just let you know that that, that there's still the ability to put that there, but as presently proposed, the access would make use of the existing driveway coming off of Hegeman. So, the primary change here is an increase from a little over 17,000 to 28,000 square feet, which is a 60% increase in building area, and overall, the campus square footage would increase from 96,000 to 110,000, which is about a 14% increase overall. But if you look at the total campus, even under this plan, only 14% of the campus is covered by buildings, about 20% by paved parking and drives, with 66% still left in some form of open space. And so the architect for USD 305 is proposing to set the orientation, so this would be the front entrance to the school. It'd be 175 feet back from Hegeman, 25 feet from Cloud. The primary access would be from this parking area here, sidewalk, up to that west-facing entrance. There's a service area and a trash enclosure back here, and again, the building would be having a painted metal skin blocking brick fascia and be very similar in appearance to the maintenance facility under construction. The sidewalls here are 12 feet with the roof pitch. The total height of the building would be 20 feet, and again, it would have a partial basement. We've outlined for you that we're taking a campus approach to parking here, and on Page Seven, we summarized the parking, and they have, under this plan, 210 parking spaces available, and we've determined that 179 would be required. In terms of landscaping, there's two variations that they are requesting from standard landscaping, and one is that the, shows up on some of the drawings, but they're looking at a shallow drainage swale out in this area to detain stormwater runoff before it's released into the storm sewer system. So, to leave that available and still have landscaping, they're proposing to back the landscaping up instead of putting it in the front 25 feet. It would be back behind that swale. The other part, due to the abundance of overhead power lines and the desire to incorporate more zero-scaping principles, there's very few shade trees proposed as part of this plan. They want to be consistent with what was done with the maintenance facility, and that was more a focus on low-growing shrubs, ornamental grasses, and some ornamental trees that don't grow up in or have the risk of growing up into power lines. And since this is a customized plan and a planned development district, you have the discretion to approve this plan if you think it meets the spirit and intent of the landscaping regulations. I think the other thing that we would look at here is that this property is divided up into several different drainage basins, and this northwest corner here, even though there's a large detention basin back over here, not all the water can get there, so a portion of it's going to drain here, and there's been a plan submitted for an L-shaped detention basin or drainage swale there that will catch the stormwater, detain it, so it doesn't overload the existing storm sewer system. And an analysis has been prepared by Pete Earls, a civil engineer, and the concept has been reviewed and approved by the city's engineering department. And so, again, there would be a catching of water here and a release at a controlled rate into the storm sewer. There are existing sidewalks on Cloud, and there are existing sidewalks on Hegeman, but they're very uneven, and there's some gaps in the system there from pre-existing driveways, so there may be a need for rebuilding of sidewalks, replacement along Hegeman. In terms of the options for signage, they can have up to one ground sign, up to 32 square feet in size, plus up to two wall signs. And so your role today, we have reviewed this plan to determine compliance with city ordinances, regulations, and policies. Your options would be to approve or disapprove the plan as submitted, or you could approve it, subject to the school district and their architect making revisions to certain things on the plan, or you could say, "We think substantial revisions need to be made, and then please bring the plan back to us." Even though we've got an increase in overall square footage in terms of the alternative school, in reviewing this and comparing it with the preliminary plan, we still think it is consistent with the plan that was presented to and approved by you in 2001, and therefore we would recommend approval be granted, including this potential future classroom. So we wanted to clarify that everybody has seen this and understands it, can ask questions about it, and the, if there was a need for that in the future, then your action today would be acknowledging that, and there would not be a need for them to come back and get that approved a second time. And then we've outlined some of the variations related to their landscaping plan, and so we're recommending that the action include the potential for this addition and that approval of this landscape plan. And we've recommended a condition at the request of the engineering department that the city engineer have an opportunity to review and approve the final design plans and specifications for this swale area out here. At this point, it's, it's a concept that engineering department believes will work, but they would like to have the opportunity to approve the final design plans and specifications for that. And I'll let Mr. Stack weigh in on that if he wishes to, but that is pretty standard practice that what Mr. Earls has provided us to date is a concept that engineers have agreed will work, subject to details. So, I think with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about the material in your packet.
Mr. Stack, did you have any remarks?
No, I didn't know if you needed me to say anything or not. Yeah, we've been working with Mr. Earls and Kent. Staff engineers reviewed the, reviewed the details of the drainage and put in a, put in the, kind of the preliminary, the approval of it, basically, and we'll just work with him to get the details figured out, and Pete's worked with us many times on that before, so we don't see that being a problem at all.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Would the applicant like to comment, or your representatives? Thank you. And of course, your name and address.
Charles Rens, Jones Gillum Rens, architects. Dean explained the project quite well. I guess just a couple of things that I'll clarify. The storm drainage study that was done by Pete and working with the school district, I wanted to explain just kind of the intent there with the orientation and how it's a little bit different from the previous plan that we had done with the two buildings essentially on Cloud Street and then over to the west on Hegeman Street. What we wanted to do, and to get the access to the building, the size of the building, we wanted to get the bulk of the building kind of off Cloud. It just seemed like putting it on Cloud, we were, you know, we were just kind of overwhelming Cloud Street, so we wanted to have more of an open setting in that area, so we've oriented the building more adjacent to the existing Hegeman facility, and then allowed for the growth back away from Cloud, just to kind of keep a nicer, open, green area. Then with the access drive that we, you know, had done with the operations center, you know, for just ease of access, for cost-effectiveness, tried to build the new parking off of the existing drives and the existing parking that we created, and that also gave us the opportunity to, I think, more effectively have a campus parking plan, you know, so that, so that we do have shared parking between essentially all the facilities there on the campus. It just kind of centralizes all the parking, and again, keeps all the parking directly off of the street. So, are there any other, are any questions about the development that you have for me?
I think it puts more on the, is, obviously, the roundabout is already there, but no concerns of traffic flow coming in and out of that as it being a maintenance facility? Because you've taken the, on the preliminary plan, you were coming in off of Cloud Street of an alternate drive. Now it looks like everything's coming in from there. As far as, I think it's going to be amazing whether somebody's going to drive down there and just actually not go around the roundabout, but cut through there. It'd be amazing to see how many, I don't, I don't know the dimensions of that, maybe it looks different on paper, but you've got maintenance vehicles coming in and out, you've got people exiting off of Broadway, and people swinging around the U-turn to come in there. It's going to be interesting, I think.
I think the, the maintenance traffic, and maybe Amy can speak to this a little bit better than me, is really pretty light throughout the day. The intense traffic at the maintenance facility is probably going to be around 5:00, 6:00 in the morning, depending on, you know, snow removal or different things like that. We do have access off of Broadway for major trucks. That is a, two or three times a week where you get, you know, a large semi-truck delivery and stuff that would be coming in off of the south end of Broadway there. It's not necessarily a public facility. The traffic there, for instance, it's the headquarters for all the maintenance staff, so the maintenance staff, they come in early in the morning, you know, they're distributed off to their different projects throughout the day, or, you know, different sites, and they return at the end of the day. With this school also, it is, the alternate school is, it's an older kids. You don't have the high drop-off traffic, you know, that you have, you know, say at an elementary school or things like that, where you're, where you're dropping kids off. So, yeah, we, I mean, we've discussed that, and the owner has felt like the access that we provide off of that roundabout is, is adequate to serve their function.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to comment that I really appreciate this. I think this parking solution is much better than what was previously shown in the preliminary plan, and I really like the idea that there are no attempt to put additional driveways out on the Cloud because that's pretty much a disaster already, and this looks like a much better use of that Hegeman roundabout cul-de-sac than I envisioned it would work. I think it'll work real well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll open the public portion on this item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this application?
Because this was an increase in square footage from, by more than 10% of the original that was at the preliminary public hearing, there was notice sent out, again, to property owners within 200 feet of this site, just identifying what, what the nature of the change was, and Mr. Hurst had a conversation with a nearby property owner.
At your seat, you'll find a conversation record that took place this morning from a phone call that staff received from Mr. Richard Gargis, who is the owner of 508 West Cloud, and that property is located on the north side of Cloud, right across the street from the proposed alternative school. Mr. Gargis's main concern was parking. He wanted to make sure that the school facility had enough off-street parking that the side streets and the neighborhood in the area didn't get flooded with vehicles parking on-street in those neighborhoods there. And what I informed Mr. Gargis of is that the school district with the new school addition is proposing twice as much off-street parking as what would typically be required for the school. The new alternative school is required to have 30 off-street parking spaces, and as you'll see by the plan, they're actually proposing 60 new parking spaces for that particular portion, plus they have an additional surplus on their campus before this project came into play to begin with. So, in all, they'll have 41 surplus parking spaces on their campus.
Anything else in the public portion on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Gentlemen, what comments have you about the staff recommendations, and is there a motion on this item?
I'd make a motion for approval of PDD-11-3A.
Would that include the classroom addition and the landscaping plan?
Yeah, with the approval, the acceptance of the, and the storm, is that what you're talking about, landscaping plan, the drainage?
Landscaping plan, just the fact that the, these are not in the front 25 feet, that you understand that these would, this would be a swale, and the landscaping would be pushed back, and that's acceptable to the commission.
And the swell is maintained by the school district?
Yes.
Yes, that'd be my motion.
I'd second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 16 carries. Administrative items?
For the benefit of the school district, Mr. Rens, and that, that is final action on that. That is an approved site plan for building permit purposes.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your patience, a long group of things to go through.
Thank you, David.
We held the best for last.
They were all yours.
I don't know why we didn't do that first.
Administrative items, number 17, capital improvement plan, program.
And I explained to Mr. Rens that I was responsible for that because the general rule of thumb is if you're continuing items over from a previous meeting, you take those up before new items, so he was forewarned. But this particular item, annually, there is a process by which the planning commission is asked to review the major capital projects proposed in the capital improvement program, and your role and function is that, that as the custodian of the comprehensive plan, that no major utility or transportation or facility project should be undertaken unless the planning commission reviews that and has determined it to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And back on December 6 last year, you performed a similar function looking at the 2012 CIP, and we've summarized some of the major projects from that, and the timeline is similar for 2013, so the 2013 project list has been referred to you for review. The longer version from the, that includes the whole laundry list of future use and identified but unfunded projects is attached, but your focus today should be to look at the 2013 projects, and if you concur that they conform with the comprehensive plan, then a motion should be made to approve the attached resolution and endorse that project list. And we have Mr. Stack here, so you're free to comment or make comments to the city commission about any particular projects you believe are important to the growth and development of the community. But we summarized there, among the projects that you looked at last year was the intersection replacement at Crawford and Ohio, which is completed. The reconstruction and widening of East Magnolia Road, you found to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. That is still under construction. The southeast line of wastewater extension, which involves a pump station and collection system along the west side of Markley Road, north of Magnolia, that is in the project acquisition stage. And then- And then there's an annual water line improvement program that's been taking place. If we focus on 2013, I think the main items of interest there, as we are attempting to get our flood control levy certified as providing 100-year protection. And I believe that two sections have identif, been identified that may need to be raised so that we can be certified as having full 100-year protection. That's very important in terms of flood insurance and being able to have levy-protected areas not be considered at risk for flooding. We have Cloud and Ninth Street intersection improvements. We have completion of Centennial Road paving improvements. It, it started at Crawford, got as far as shilling with, with curb and gutter sidewalks, those types of improvements. And from there, south to Waterwell, has never been completed. One item that also is in there is a, is a item to replace the decorative lights throughout the downtown district, which date back to approximately 1986, I believe. And item six would be of interest to you, which one of the planning commission's recommendations was that the city undertake a program for gateway or entryway signage. And you recommended that that be incorporated into the capital improvement program, and it has been. And you indicated that your top priority was North Ninth and I-70, and that has been followed as well. Hike and bike trail segments, there's, there's annual appropriations for that. But I think the, the downtown lighting, the gateway signage, the flood control levy, Cloud and Ninth and Centennial Road would be the major projects that you should focus on. And I think I'll defer any questions you have about those projects to Mr. Stack in, in terms of particulars. But the, the resolution that's attached to your packet there is, is simply a resolution from the planning commission finding that, that, that there's no project that is proposed that is, is outside of a planned growth area or service area for this city. And, and that is your primary focus. If for the minutes or record, you'd, you'd like to make some comments about priorities or other projects of benefit, those can be added. But I think, first thing is I'll, I'll let you ask any questions you have of Mr. Stack. If you have questions about Ninth and Cloud or the levy certification or things of that nature. And then we'll see if you're interested in making a motion. And then following that, any comments you might have about other projects.
Gentlemen, questions for Mr. Stack? Mr. Stack, do you have anything you want us to know?
Yeah.
I could ask a lot of questions, but we wanna get through this.
Yeah, it's late, I understand. I just have a few clarifications. As these projects are in, just kind of the application stage to the finance department and the budgeting stage in context of the whole city. So, with the, the street lighting project, the bicentennial center, and then the city project, the city street projects as well, some of these are sometimes changed. I just wanted to let you know that Centennial Road would be more or less from jumper, where the old jumper road is, to the city limits. So, I don't wanna say we're gonna go to Waterwell yet, just because that was the original thought years ago. But at this time, based on the numbers and the numbers we gave, Rob, that's just kinda, it looks like maybe a misprint. But just to clarify, it would go down to near the city.
That, that number seemed like it was smaller than that distance, so.
Yeah, that's correct, yes. That would not cover another, it's basically about a half, a little bit, under a half-mile worth of project, which would, which would be good to get it to the city limits, but doesn't go the whole way to Vortex and yet. So, that's more, that's still a county road.
The present city limits is just about where the water tower is.
Correct. Kind of the curve.
There, where the curb is and Centennial Road and the, the water tank, that's, that's where Centennial Road, the city limits there. So, that, that might be a, a more accurate description.
Love Box is about there on the west side?
Yes.
And then with Cloud and Ninth, we do have a $350,000 KDOT grant to help us with that project. Still, the project is, is approximately a million dollars, so the 650,000 is the city portion of that. And that is, has been to the city commission as a study session to kind of go over some concepts for that. We have gone to the property owners around there to try and get their concerns. Definitely, there's a lot of things to balance with parking and existing conditions and extremely tight right-of-way, pre-existing developments that have been there for a long time. But most people are pretty on board with it and were excited about possible change. Of course, they were concerned with, if they'd have to lose any, any property or, or parking, really, was the main thing. So, it doesn't look like we're gonna have to impact parking. We may have to diagonal parking that's there. Some of the things would also be widening the road. Well, that's gonna impact some of the front yards of some of the, some of the different properties there, but not enough to, you know, we're not gonna demolish any buildings or, not getting into, you know, major landscaping or anything like that. So, so far, that's in the design stages and that's, that's a project that we hope to get rolling later this year, or later in 2013, basically.
Are you seeking KDOT funds for that or what, what's the other source of funding?
Yeah, that's the, the 650 is city, the 350, 350,000 is KDOT funds.
Dean, do you see that going all the way back? Do you see that going all the way back then to the Quick Shop? Or how far does that project go back?
There's a, there's a street before Quick Shop. There's one in the middle to, to the west. I can't remember how.
Wood, Woodlawn?
Woodlawn, yeah, it goes to Woodlawn. We didn't, we didn't get city commission approval to go to Clapham. So, that, that was discussed. KW, Ken Wesley would have liked to have seen that, but at the time, it's, it would've cost another half a million dollars. And the city commission thought we'd compromise with, it's gonna eliminate a lot of the backups. Just having two lanes for that block, basically, is gonna help us with, with the backups a lot, which should ultimately help with traffic accidents, which was how we got the KDOT grant. So, even though we're somewhat addressing capacity, we're still trying to address the accidents as well, which helps us keep the KDOT money. They've been concerned with us, with that, with that, you know, project getting a lot larger than they had originally planned, but so far, so good on that.
Clouds stay the same width or does it widen?
Cloud will stay the same width, but it has an offset as well. And there, the offsets and the parking and just the messed up, shouldn't say the messed up, just that, over the years, the different plats have lined up in that corner and they've been off by 20 feet on each corner. I mean, they're just, it's interesting. I guess Dean may know a lot of the history of it, but they've just been platted and so the whole thing's been just kind of shifted in the wrong direction every time. So, the widening of Cloud will more or less be to straighten out and make it more linear and, and safer, hopefully, for people going through and making the left turns. As well as there's a median proposed along Cloud to eliminate some of the, the parking that, you know, backs into traffic and then cuts across traffic to get into the parking spots. That was a major point of contention, too. So, whether or not that median stays is still a question, but we felt like it'd be safer with the median there. But it, it wouldn't impact, you know, the parking would still be there, just you'd only get to it from one direction. So, that is, those are some of the safety items that, to try to address on Cloud. Ninth Street was more or less lining it up and adding in the lane as well. Let's see, and then just to discuss a little bit about the downtown lighting, that did go to city commission last night as a study session, just to go over the concepts. And they, they looked at the $3.7 million project and ended up deciding on something less than that. As far as, there was a lot of options, a lot of things that can be done with lighting. And so, they, they chose something less than 3.7, but I'm not sure what the final number was. So, it was, anyway, it's not gonna be quite 3.7, as far as we know. But it'll still be a major, a major improvement to the downtown lighting. Those lights had been there since the mid-'80s. So, I mean, they, they still work, but they are inefficient and hard to get parts for and old and actually were.
They were designed for indoor use.
Okay. Didn't know that. They were actually spray painted a few, or spray painted or painted by the SDI a few years ago.
Hand painted.
Actually held up, held up alright. I mean, they're not bad. But that's the kinda, that's the kinda maintenance they're taking right now. The annual hike and bike trails, Dean talked about that. We're trying to just work our way around the levy. It's a little bit each year. We, we were able to get some grant money from the Salina Community Foundation for the last three years. That runs out this year. It's our last year of it. So, with parks and with public works, we still felt like, you know, putting a nominal amount of, you know, we can get another half mile of surfacing along that levy and keep, keep on going around to the north and all the way onto the west side, actually. There are quite a few railroad crossings to deal with, so that's gonna probably stop us until we can get those resolved. But, I mean, we put railroad crossings in all the time, so we'll do it. It's just they cost them, they cost money and they're a little harder to deal with. I guess that's really it.
Did I correctly characterize that there are two spots on the levy that need to be elevated? Is that a fair statement?
That's correct. Yeah, I should, I should talk about that. Yeah, with the levy certification project, there's a small area around State Street, which, that was the area that was the closest in the flood of 2007 to being overtopped. Actually, we had some damage on that side of town. So, it wasn't surprising that that area would be close when it comes to the 100-year flood. It actually still has almost three foot of fleet, freeboard, but you, you need the three foot of freeboard to certify the levy, and it's not quite there. So, that'll take some, some work around State Street. It's not a, a whole lot, about a thousand feet south of State Street. And then as well as west of Ninth Street, that'll actually have to raise about a foot just west of Ninth Street to where the Dry Creek pump station is. It's past the, I'm trying to think what's over there.
It's be south of Thomas Park?
South of Thomas Park, straight, yeah, exactly. Right on the south side of Thomas Park, on the north side of that storage building that's there. That'll be a, a more significant project and thus, that's why the, the cost is a little higher, 'cause it has to go up a foot.
So, if we do those two things, does that answer the big debacle we had years ago about the flood? I mean, the, what?
Definitely helps us certify the levy. And then, the levy then can be utilized in all the floodplain mapping to, to say that the, the city is saved from flood. And thus, anybody who, if this levy failed, basically, how's that work, Dean? They don't have to buy flood insurance, really?
Right. If, if the levy was not certified, FEMA had initially threatened that they would just ignore the fact that it was there altogether, which would basically put large parts of the city that aren't in the floodplain today in. So, the, the other thing that's important is the same engineering firm that's helping us with levy certification is also preparing the new flood maps.
Correct.
That go with that. So, there'll be more coordination and I think better data and just a better working relationship.
Yeah, we've, we've so far, the flood certification is the first step and then the FEMA maps will be the second step. And that'll be another, basically, we restart the process about re.
Starting all over with the remapping.
Starting all over again, which we feel like we have much more defendable maps. They've taken hard surface data. They, they intuitive, or the concepts that they've shown where we flood, we did flood there, so it makes sense. They, the areas make sense, but there are much less structures than, than originally proposed.
So, the assumption is that most of the city of Salina would be out of the floodplain?
Yeah.
There would be any parts of it that you can, would assume would still be in?
Yeah, then the.
There will still be parts in south Salina that were subject to flooding that'll still show as being in the floodplain and east of Ohio between Cloud and Crawford. There will still be areas there, but it, it will be much reduced from what the proposed maps that were.
That's correct.
Put out a few, couple of years ago. I think more realistic.
Correct. More defendable, more makes, it makes sense to people. People have seen the water there. It's, it's, it's not any surprises, really, from what we can tell. So, it's, it's much more defendable. Still, there'll still be properties in the floodplain, though. What else, Dean? Is that, I guess?
I think, yeah, I think that.
That's for 2013, that's, that's what we have.
Yeah, we're just, the rest is for your, just to gaze into the future, but your focus this evening is to look at the 2013 projects and particularly the, the flood control levy, the Ninth Street intersection, Centennial Road and downtown lighting and gateway signage. And if, if you think those, that where those investments are being made is, is consistent with what our comprehensive plan directs us, then the appropriate action would be to make a motion to approve the, the attached resi, resolution and endorse the, the project list. And that, that would be the action, we'd get Mr. Ryan to, to sign that resolution. And then if you have any comments about the, you know, future year projects or projects you think are missing, you can have those for the record.
I know it's late, but two things. One, still, I would go back to the, to city commission, whoever said that they shouldn't go back. It's not necessarily traffic, so much going back to Clapham on Cloud, is that's probably the number one location for stalled cars during flood time. So, I'm not quite sure that you can't, it isn't worth the money to look at that again, not for traffic, but for, I mean, that floods, that is a flood right there.
Yeah, that was, that's a good point to clarify, is the commission asked us to look at the flooding in the intersection, so we are looking to try to resolve that. But if, yeah, I'm not sure we can, but that's something we're gonna do, a, a study to try to figure out if there's another place we can take the water. Clapham has a huge trunk line on it, and if we can somehow get to Clapham, we could split the water and have part go down Cloud and part go down Clapham. So, that is a, that's a good point. We're gonna have to look at the flooding.
How does the drainage work there with Hagaman down where the, the school system is, improving that area? Does their improved drainage help the Clapham or the Cloud?
Theirs actually goes to the, I guess part of it does.
Yeah, they're, it's released at a controlled rate. Their detention pond that's there behind Genesis, actually, there's a pipeline that goes from there over to Ninth Street, then it goes up to Ninth and Cloud.
Part of theirs is gonna go to the west, isn't it? To the inland.
And what we're, what we looked at today is gonna go over to Pershing.
Right. That part's going to the west.
And then there are some parts that go to Broadway and Hagaman. But the pond actually discharges over to Ninth Street.
I was gonna ask this as a general question when Mr. Rens was here, and I didn't know whether it was pertinent, but I'm glad you raised that issue, 'cause it's, it was running through my mind, too. There's been a lot of talk about porous pavement, water-absorbing pavement. Is there anything in the works from the city or for other projects where that would be required or suggested?
It hasn't been required. There's, there just hasn't been a lot of, of successful projects in Kansas thus far. So, it's been a, it's a, it's fairly expensive and in Salina, there's usually property enough to deal with the, you know, it's kind of the, we have a land cheap enough at this time. The economics don't quite add up. And in the bigger cities, it definitely is looked at more because they don't have the space to put a lot of detention ponds. So, it's something I think will come around, but it just hasn't, hasn't come to Salina yet. We haven't anybody willing to try it and, you know, put some money out there to actually do it and to have some success with it, too. 'Cause some of the Kansas City areas have tried it and this hasn't worked real well yet. It's clogged and been a real maintenance headache for them, so, so, so far, nothing yet.
And I wanna step out of the way real quickly for Mr. Walsh's other question, but this is just, I have to know, on the flood control levy, along the same sort of topic, what is riprap?
Riprap? That is a large rock that lines, where did, where did we say that in here?
Under the improvements for certification on the flood, flood control levy for riprap and erosion, scour repairs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's some areas that need to be basically refilled in with, yeah, there's, we put that in there. So, that is the riprap, there's just areas of the levy where the riprap has decayed. And riprap basically is an energy dissipator for water.
Yeah.
It's probably more than you wanna know, but it's, slows down the water and helps it to not erode the, the levy in certain areas that are erosive. So, yeah, there's a lot of riprap improvements that have been identified that we need to complete, as well as some of the areas of the, of the channels have degraded or scoured and riprap helps us to repair those as well.
I was just struck by its poetic quality.
I hope we even spelled it right. It's kind of an interesting word.
My last question, I'm not quite sure you can answer this, 'cause it seems out of, I'm not sure what you're responsible for, but the bicentennial center improvements, I know a million doesn't go very far, but anytime I see the word 8.1 million.
It's a big one.
I've gotta ask, because if we're gonna approve this and send this forward, does that not go, does, is, is the city looking at spending 8.1 million in 2013 on the bicentennial center?
It's a possibility. It's going to city commission next Monday for a study session. So, what, what will get approved there, I'm not sure, but that is the proposal from the, basically parks, parks and the contract, contractual arrangement we have with whoever runs that now. I can't remember the name.
Global Spectrum.
Global Spectrum, is that right? Okay. They're gonna talk about what they need, what needs done. And so, it's, it's more of a, I don't know if you guys are approving 8.1 million, but you're acknowledging that there needs, there's definitely improvements that are needed there.
Acknowledging that that, that is a location.
It's a need.
That would be consistent with the comprehensive plan to invest in.
Right. Now, whether or not that's the right amount, I don't. Now, whether or not that's the right amount, I don't, I don't know if they have, if they have to get into that or not, but it's, it's being discussed, and 8.1 to somewhere below that is what's being discussed, and will be proposed on Monday at the City Commission meeting. That's all I can say to that, Todd. It's a lot of money, you're right.
If I had my way, I'd hand out flashlights and take some of that, that lighting money and put it on the levy, but.
Yeah. Interesting, so if anybody has a concern watching this on TV, they could come to the City Commission meeting on next Monday, is that what it's going?
Yeah, it's going to be discussed, Monday the 10th, yeah, they'll be proposed, they'll, they'll give like the breakdown of why it's 8.1 million and the reasoning for it, and then the Commission can hear thoughts and concerns on that.
That's the 2:30 study session, not the 4 o'clock session.
Correct, 2:30 study session, correct.
2:30.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Gentlemen, our student, members of our commission, long meeting, yeah, planning commission sometimes, thank you for.
No, I thought, Dean said that we could make an additional side comment on this plan, and I think there's a huge omission in there. There's nothing in it anyplace about repair or replacement of the City County Health Building, and we are at least half responsible for that as a community, and I would like to recommend that they look seriously at budgeting that immediately for 2012, with the focus to keep it in the central part of our city, and that if necessary, the bicentennial proposal be cut back dramatically in order to fund the, the Health Department.
Could we put them in the bicentennial center?
I'd go for that, great thinking. Commissioner Householder might like that, have you talked to him?
They did put that on their strategic plan, it was just updated last night, and the resolving the City Council, or the City Health, County Health Department was a goal, so it is, they were acknowledged that it needs to happen, it needs to happen this year, so. So they at least acknowledged that they need to work that out, so it wasn't that work hands-off, it was not hands-off, from what I can tell.
It simply remains to be seen whether that's actually a CIP item, or if there's some other source of, of funding for that, but I, your, your comments will be duly noted in the minutes.
Yes, and I want to second Mr. Walsh's and Mr. Purdy's penetrating and pertinent questions.
I, I'd like to make a comment, are we on other matters now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment on the, all of these applications regarding, and this whole process of changing these to public use educational facility districts. I know that there's been some road bumps in that way, I want to commend the staff on handling those and, and doing that in a very open and transparent manner, and, and certainly the fact that we didn't have a whole lot of public comment, or, and just a few handful of negatives, in, in all of the, I would guess thousands of people that were notified in this whole process, the fact that, that, that there was a very, very few that, that had anything to say is a, is a testament to the, the fact that you guys improved that process, and you did it very open and transparently, and I want to commend you guys for that.
We, we appreciate your sentiments, and our, our comment has been that if there is an issue or an item that really grabs the public's attention or neighbors' attention, they're capable of letting you know about it, either by attending in large numbers of public hearing, or submitting written correspondence, or that, that type of thing, in our, you know, we, we never know when we send a notice out of an application, how people are going to respond till they receive it. So, you know, we, we will send the notice out, and you could conduct a public hearing to an empty room, or you could have a, a full room, and it's just going to depend on how people respond to that notice. And on, on that note, we will meet on the 18th, and all of those applications will relate to the Quail Meadows Estates area right there between Kaywood, Eileen, and Melanie, that empty block that is just on the north side of Schilling Road. We have, Mr. Biquist has now got his plat in to create the seven individual lots, and then we have the plan for a senior housing project at the west end of that block. Those will come to you together for a hearing on the 18th, so you'll get to see the whole picture there on the 18th.
Thank you very much, are there other comments?
Our only other good news for you is that the first Tuesday in January is New Year's Day, and there'll be no meeting.
Well, I wouldn't have been here.
Yeah, not that, not that you would come.
Wouldn't have been a forum.